Evening. At 7:00, we'll call the meeting to order. Somebody taking the roll? Are we just gonna?
I can. I got it here. Commissioner Brink? Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Seeler? Commissioner Young?
Here.
Chair Gerard?
Here. We ask if you're ready, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you're able, not if you're ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just thought, we all just saw it, right?
Oops. We apologize for having the flag a little lower this evening. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's an unabated motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item five, the consent agenda considerations. We have one item. A, approve planning commission meeting minutes from May 24, 2023. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda or pull it, whichever you prefer.
Mr. Chairman.
You're going to need to abstain on that one.
So we need to pull it?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. First up on our regular agenda is a public hearing preliminary and final plat for Ingersoll Ponds, east of Ingersoll Avenue and south of 210th Street North, PID 23-032-21-22-003.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This item, as you introduce, is a little bit unusual. It's both preliminary and final plat approval we're requesting this evening, or the applicant is, for the Ingersoll Ponds subdivision. This is a follow-up to a concept plan you saw earlier this year in April, same property, same general layout. So the site is on the screen here. It's a property on the east side of Ingersoll Avenue, just south of 210th Street, shown on the map. This is the proposed preliminary plat. It creates five lots on the east side of Ingersoll. I handed out a printed copy for you to view as well, the same as what's on the screen. Again, the layout for this preliminary plat is, the lots and the lot shapes are all the same as your, as the concept plan. You saw what has changed since the concept plan review is more detailed work was done by the developers team on primarily greening and stormwater management. They've identified with the purple boxes preliminary house pads on each lot, some stormwater infiltration basins, which are, there are four of those scattered throughout the subdivision, and clarified again the right-of-way needed for Ingersoll, Ingersoll Avenue, where driveways would go, and ensuring there's enough room for a primary and secondary septic system on each of the lots. Again, the lot sizes, lot widths are all the same as those that were on the, excuse me, on the concept plan. And just again, remind folks, there are no improvements proposed for Ingersoll Avenue. It's existing street in the city. They are, again, as required by the city, dedicating right-of-way for the east half of it because we currently don't have that. They're doing that as part of the plat. They are also, again, it'd be private septic and well on each lot, so there's no public utilities being installed. The stormwater system, the stormwater infiltration basins will all be private, and maintenance agreements will be worked out with the Watershed District per their requirements for those facilities. So really, no public infrastructure going in with this subdivision. Couple of new things, since the concept plan review is page three of the report, I go through with the parkland dedication requirements. Code gives us essentially two ways to calculate Based on a 10% land dedication, in this case, if we, the city went down that route, it'd be, if we're not taking land, as we would in some subdivisions, it'd be almost a $39,000 park dedication fee. The second method that the city can use is to do a flat fee per lot, which staff's opinion is more reasonable in this case, $2,500 fee per lot. The total then would be $12,500, which would go to the park fund for future park improvements, which may involve a trail along Ingersoll in the future, or to the park, let's say it's right to the west of here.
Shields Lake.
Yeah, Shields Lake, thank you. So that's where that money would be specifically spent when the time comes. Again, no trails being proposed at this time. Again, their comprehensive plan does show eventually there could be a trail along Ingersoll, and we don't know yet where or how it will go in, but something to keep in mind. As with shown in the concept plan, all the wetlands were delineated. The wetland delineation was approved through the technical panel last fall, and again, those are shown on the plan per that requirement. And again, the final approvals for that and the stormwater ponding systems will be with the Watershed District. They require permits, and they're working, I spoke to the applicants tonight, they are working with the Watershed District to finalize all those requirements that need to be done for the Watershed District and the permitting. What's, again, a little bit unusual in this case, the owner developer will be selling the lots. They are not doing any of the site preparation. It's not a typical subdivision where you might have roads put in, and mass grading put in, and utilities put in. They're preparing the lots, getting them ready, and then they will be sold to individual builders to construct homes on. Now, those homes will have to fit with the site and fit with the grading, and will be subject to the drainage requirements of the Watershed District, but that's something that will be handled down the road. Well, again, we've had preliminary comments from the Watershed District. They initially had some things that were still missing. They've since been submitted to the Watershed District, and they're in the process of getting their approvals, hopefully maybe even next week, if not into the first part of August. Well, that's moving along. We had a neighborhood meeting for this proposal two weeks ago upstairs. We had eight residents come out, primarily those along Ingersoll. They expressed some concerns about, well, first, the loss of the beautiful property. Would there be impacts on the wetlands? And there's really not, as best we can tell. One resident expressed concerns about the effect on hunting rules because now there'd be five more homes, and I think for shooting, you'd have to be at least 500 feet away from home. And this whole big area has been a wide-open field for deer hunting, and that's going away, but that happens. So in the code, we have review criteria for both preliminary plat, final plat, and findings of facts that are required to be looked at. Again, I've included those in the report on pages six and seven, and very condensed version as this project meets all the criteria. There's really, I didn't find any reason to deny either the preliminary plat and final plat. And the reason we're doing final plat and preliminary plat together is because there are no public improvements. The lot layout is not changing. In a more typical subdivision, if there was streets and utilities that go in, the developer gets preliminary plat approval, they start making their public improvements, doing the site work, and then they would come back to the city for final plat approval. In this case, there's none of that going on, so since nothing's changing, we agree to speed up the process, just combine them both into one report and one set of actions. So with all that said, our recommendation is to recommend to the council approval of the preliminary plat and final plat for Ingersoll Ponds. I didn't include the final plat, which is a lot cleaner version than the preliminary. It's just a lot layout and all the easements on there for the wetlands and drainage purposes, but that shows the five lot layout, and we're recommending that subject to the conditions in the staff report. There are 12 of those, including getting final engineering approval, final Watershed District approval. Several of the conditions will be, have to be met before plat is released, and many of those are, will be implemented at the time of building permits on the five lots. So with that, I will stop, take questions. The applicant is here as well to answer questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Susan, or Kevin?
One question, Ken. I see the indication on the plat for the septic areas. I don't see an indication on the plat for the alternative sites. Are they one of those?
I, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I believe that was their intent, that both could fit in those areas, and we have a condition that, again, with building permits. I think that's the applicant.
Do we know what the size of these septic systems are going to be?
I do not.
Probably don't know until the house is designed, right?
Correct.
And so they're confident that there's enough area there to put in, I'm assuming, mound systems for a, let's just say, as a five-bedroom house with four bathrooms.
That's a big mound.
And a finished basement. That's a pretty big mound system.
Right. And those will be things that we, we will need, and the builder will need to verify at time of building permit, to show how it's going to fit.
Thank you.
Susan?
That was mine, is I don't see any secondary septic areas. Are these wetland areas going to be available to those property owners to do wetland banking?
Hmm, I do not believe so. I think they're going to be not disturbed by lands.
That would, that would work well for wetland banking.
I don't think they get to have credits for them.
Regarding the right-of-way, we know that we're going to want a bike trail in this area, and there are essentially two owners on the east side, and there are at least eight on the west side. And we have an opportunity now to get enough width for a bike trail on the east side. You've got the owners of this piece, and then there's one owner down to get to the rest of County Road 50.
Right.
It would make much more sense for us, realizing that we are going to want to do bike trails, and we're going to want the connection from 97 to County Road 50 to get out to Big Marine and the other areas, to achieve, to get that right now. We're giving the developer a heck of a deal on the parkland dedication, and so I think it is only reasonable to get the additional right-of-way along there right now for the, for the bike trail that we're envisioning.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Commissioner?
Okay.
Are you saying in addition to the lands that we are already requesting for the right-of-way? Are you suggesting that we should be requiring more land than what's being requested?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or?
I will say, our engineer did review it, and has, we are aware that we would like to have the trail along through here. So Ryan did think that this would be sufficient to get the roadway and the trail in.
It said in the report that we're going to need additional right-of-way for, for a bike trail, and having tried to obtain right-of-way in the past from multiple owners, you've got at least eight here, eight parcels here, in the future, as opposed to doing that now, while we essentially have two owners between the bend and County Road 50, makes a great deal more sense. Especially since staff is recommending, you know, savings of over $26,000 on the parkland dedication.
You were conferring.
Yeah.
Are we going to have words of wisdom from you there, Ken?
Well, I was just examining in a little more detail the preliminary plat and the right-of-way dedication shown on the screen, and you folks have it printed there. And Susan, too, one of, one of the challenges is, from the engineering standpoint, we haven't had any real design work done, and we don't know with topography and wetlands and all those kind of things, there one side of the road that would be better or easier to put the trail on without some, a more deep dive. And maybe the east side would, and maybe the west side. We don't know. My assumption when I wrote the report was the west side, but that was what I would call an educated yes, for lack of a better term. Maybe it would be better on the east side. Is there room with the right-of-way dedication? It was my impression from the engineer that he could make it work, and as well, go back to the plat.
Showing fewer wetlands on the east side of the road. You're showing fewer ups and downs in topography, especially as you are working that road.
I will just reiterate that our engineer has recommended the right-of-way through here, and that we would be able to get the trail in the right-of-way that would be proposed as part of Ingersoll Ponds as proposed, and the right-of-way that would be on the west side of this development. So I think this commission certainly can, as part of your discussion, talk about whether or not city staff should further explore that for additional right-of-way. But we've, we did that it out, at least with our engineering team, so.
So, so he said that there is plenty of room for the street and a bike trail on the existing right-of-way?
Not on the existing, but on the existing plus what would be proposed to be dedicated as part of this plat, yes. So what's, there is right-of-way through there, some, and then as part of what's being proposed as the Ingersoll plat, that yes, we would have enough right-of-way to be able to accommodate the roadway and a trail.
Any other comments, Susan?
No.
Okay. Any other comments for staff? The applicant is here, I believe. Would you like to make any comments regarding this applica, your application? Sir, I, sir? I need to have you come up and state your name and address for the record, because you're, you're going to be on TV, and this is your-
Perfect.
-15 minutes of fame.
Okay, John Pelter. And in the, the report that I was sent, it said the east side looked better for some areas of the right-of-way for the bike trail. And I can see both sides. I suppose you can't really cross the road, but on the west side, there's some deep ditches that have to have culverts. So I guess that was my only thought on that, on the bike trail.
And you're on the east side.
We're on the east side, yeah. I'm sorry, the east side, it's got the culverts, yeah. They'll have to have culverts, so.
Can you, there was a question regarding the septic system, whether this area here is large enough for both the primary and a backup?
It, from my understanding, it is twice the size it was, it is supposed to be, which is whatever they, our engineer came up with, you know, the city specs, I presume.
Okay. So your, your engineer's confident you can put two, a backup system in there 30 years from now? Any other questions to the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Abby, are you looking for two motions tonight, or one?
Susan?
I apologize. I apologize.
This is a public hearing. We ask if you would wish to speak to this application. You step up, state your name and address for the record. Spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on the application. Once we have heard everyone who wishes to give comment, we will close the public hearing. It will then come back to the planning commission to make a recommendation to the city council. So with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:22 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone, anyone online, or any emails to read in?
No messages, no one online, that I can tell.
I'll ask again, does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:23 PM. Commissioners, what is your desire today?
I agree, it's pretty straightforward. I'm willing to make a motion to approve the preliminary and, and final plats with the 12 staff recommendations and the proviso that the city engineer verify that there is sufficient property in the right-of-way for a bike trail without additional property purchase.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. So Susan, you're, you added a number 13?
Mm-hmm.
And my second question is, you're recommending the city council they approve?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Commissioners, discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. City council will deal with the final decision on this, and I don't know when that'll happen.
It's scheduled for August 14th in front of the city council.
August 14th.
August 14th. Good luck on your project. I have to tell you, like I did on your first game, that it's probably the most complete concept plan I had ever seen come forward to us. So I hope your project goes well.
Very nice, very nice, Gerard.
All righty. Item 6B, it also will have a public hearing. It's for a minor subdivision of Shadow Creek Estates, northeast corner of Highway 61 and County Road 50. It's PID 20-032-21-41-0001. Abby, are you presenting?
I am. Thank you, Chair Gerard. I do want to just note for the record, the agenda says Shadow Creek Estates. It's Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision. We, the Estates is the eastern property. We do have two separate development applications running here, just as a reminder. So in late '21, the developer, Todd Christiansen of Elmcrest Vista's LLC, applied for a concept plan review for a planned unit development, a major subdivision. After several renditions before this body in the spring of this year, the planning commission did approve a preliminary plat for a subdivision of this parcel with an adjacent parcel known as Shadow Creek Estates, as I just mentioned. The developer, as you know, has elected to not move forward with that preliminary plat, but move forward with two separate developments. The eastern development, not highlighted on the screen shown, it would be known as Shadow Creek Estates, and would include the town home site access to Goodview. You've reviewed a preliminary plat on that development. The Shadow Creek Stables site would remain as it sits today, and there'd be no operational or land development changes associated with that. Tonight before you, though, is the consideration of a minor subdivision of the western parcel. It's a vacant parcel that the landowner is proposing to split into two almost identical pieces of property. They're right around six acres apiece. That doesn't include any lands needed for preservation of wetland, right-of-way, that sort of thing. At this time, there's no development proposal being proposed, or no physical land alterations being proposed as part of this development. Tonight before you is just the consideration of the split itself. The city staff has discussed with the landowner and a future applicant, the potential development of parcel B for multifamily housing. However, nothing has been submitted to the city at this time. So the city allows for a minor subdivision of Meets and Bounds as a more efficient review of Meets and Bounds properties. The code is pretty specific in that you, minor subdivisions, they need to meet the underlying code requirements. Basic code requirements for this multiple-family residential property, each parcel needs to be an acre, which they do meet that, that requirement. Each of them needs to have frontage on a public road, which they do. So parcel B, we'll start with that one, has frontage on both County Road 50 and Highway 61. And even though we probably wouldn't think of it as frontage, parcel A does meet that frontage requirement on Highway 61. That being said, neither parcel are being proposed to be accessed off of Highway 61. Both parcels are being proposed to be accessed off a public easement, an 80-foot-wide easement on the east side of the property line. The reason that it's proposed on that far east side of the property line is to allow for future access into the stable site, as well as that develops in the future someday. Beyond that, there's really no other zoning code requirements for the city's consideration of a minor subdivision. When we're looking at any subdivision, we look to see that there's consistency with the comprehensive plan. And as the commission may remember, the property is guided for mixed-use development. And our mixed-use development's a little tricky in that it says you have to have a minimum of 50% residential at 50, 15 to 20 units per acre. Right now, with the minor subdivision, there's no density being proposed. However, as part of the previous development on the east side of the property, we talked about a slightly lower density in that town home development in the northeast corner, and that the landowner would need to enter into a density transfer agreement, and we'd have to work through a comp plan amendment to transfer some of that, the densities around through here. We are meeting with the Met Council tomorrow to continue to work on that comp plan amendment, but right now, there's nothing that inherently we would look at for consistency with the future land use of the comprehensive plan. When it comes to parkland dedication, again, I think as Ken had just mentioned to you, parkland dedication, our, our city code indicates 10% of properties to be dedicated for parkland. As part of previous development reviews of the site, we've looked at the potential of fee in lieu of parkland dedication, so that we may be able to utilize some of those funds for the development of Southview Park, just to the north of the site. So as a reminder, the site is proposed to have trail access that would run along that right-of-way, cross over the stable site, cross over the wetland area, and go up into that Southview Park. Cross-access easements and agreements, public trail easements would be required, but that would allow the city to potentially develop Southview Park with some more active play facilities that this, these neighborhoods could serve, as well as the existing neighborhood. In October of '22, the former Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission, I always say Parks, Lakes, Trails, it's just in my head, former Parks, Trails, Lakes Commission did review this. They were in support of both a trail through the site, as well as be in lieu of land dedication that would be able to accommodate some future development in Southview Park. Engineering comments on the site, our city engineer has reviewed it. They are in support of that 80-foot right-of-way easement, as well as trail easements for the future trail extension. There is easement currently proposed along the east side of parcel A that would more than likely be, need to be realigned with the actual trail alignment. So staff is recommending a, a condition of approval that we would work through that before we'd release any deeds. before we'd release any deeds. The big challenge here with this site is the site accesses, is being proposed to access off of County Road 50. As you may remember, past development plans did show access being combined with the stable site. The landowner is concerned about the disruption to the current business operations and also just animal welfare with traffic coming into that site. Thus, the 80-foot right-of-way is being proposed. The county is not in support of this access or the actual subdivision itself. In late May, the city received this access management plan from the county. We hadn't had any discussion on it with the county. But they showed where they would want to see in the future full access, future right-in, right-out only access, temporary accesses, and then even some of those existing driveway accesses that they would like to see removed. They are showing that access point on the Shadow Creek Stables site. As a reminder, that site is not a part of this minor subdivision, and that site isn't being proposed to be developed at all at this time. That access point would line directly up with 6141-202nd. The city staff does have some concerns. We understand the county's concerns, that they want to have suitable distance from that future signal or roundabout at Highway 61 and County Road 50. Their access separation requirement is actually an eighth of a mile. And that is why they're trying to push that back to that 660-foot mark from that intersection. However, it does make it tricky for development on both the north and south that we want to try to line up those access points. The county does own the parcel right on the corner. The city has entered into a land swap agreement with them that that would potentially become city property in the future for future public works campus. Additionally, this 6141 site would have to accommodate the access point for the city. That, I believe, I think the city staff believes that we're asking a lot of adjacent property owners to accommodate those accesses. It's either asking them to do their development now or it's precluding those developments until those other adjacent landowners are ready and willing to develop. Staff has requested meeting with the county to talk about this. This is something that has been ongoing for some time, we've been trying to set up this meeting. We believe however, that given the plan does conform to our minimum requirements for a minor subdivision, that this is something that is eligible for the city's consideration. We do recommend the planning commission consider providing a recommendation to the city council to approve the minor subdivision with several conditions. Staff report outlined six conditions. And one of them would be that the landowner would be responsible for obtaining access to County Road 50 and that access would be submitted to the city prior to the release of deeds and/or building permits. The landowner is aware of this issue, adjacent landowners are aware of this issue. We are trying to work through the county with this. It may be a little bit of time yet, and we think that something could be developed, some agreement could be developed in the future. But we wanted to at least bring this before you for your consideration to keep this moving on. So this is a public hearing, I didn't include it in my staff report. I recommend you ask questions, talk to the developer, hold a hearing. But if you are favorable, move to recommend the city council conditionally approve the Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision with the conditions noted by staff. The landowner and developer are here tonight? Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions?
What's the residential feedback on this?
We have not received any comments from the neighborhood. Now, this was part of previous neighborhood meetings. It's not the first proposal that's come forth. The neighborhood was mostly concerned with the development in the northeast corner because that is directly adjacent to other residential development. There was at least one landowner along County Road 50 that was concerned overall with the urban development that's going to be happening in this area. There was concern about just increased traffic on County Road 50. County Road 50 has a pretty low volume right now. The county has designated this, I believe, as a collector road which has a pretty high volume threshold, but we're still at a pretty low volume right now. Overall though, as part of this minor subdivision review, we have not received any comments. Now, I do know that there are adjacent landowners here tonight that may want to provide comment.
Susan?
I'll wait until the questions of the developer.
Alright, so my question is, you have the map from the county, if you could pull that up?
Sure Ken.
Thank you. So as I, this seems to be the elephant in the room to me. This lot line split is going to be inside of anywhere they're going to consider access, the county is? So really, this makes this an unbuildable lot because they don't have access? Or am I missing something?
That is correct, and staff has advised that the landowner should be discussing that with their legal counsel in the county. We are not deeming that an unbuildable lot. We, there is an access to the site right now. It is a farm access, a field access. But that is why too, we are saying that the landowner needs to work with the county. We're willing to have continued conversations with the county to see if we can find some agreement. But I'm not going to sit here and say that it is rendered unbuildable.
Well, even if they get some agreement, they're not going to be a left turn off of County Road 50 or 202nd into this development. Or am I missing something?
There's no place to really turn around and hook a U-turn to go in and...
And the county's letter is very clear, they're going to ban U-turns at both 61 and Goodview.
Yeah.
The county does not have any sort of formal plans for County Road 50. There has been discussions that some planning study may be done next year, but I don't think it's in their capital plan. We have talked with the county in the past about the intersection with Goodview Avenue. And as you can see, the right-of-way that has been obtained through there does line it up well for a potential U-turn. So if there was somebody traveling on Highway 61 and then turned east onto County Road 50 in the future, there may be the possibility to make that U-turn, but it still would be that right-in, right-out design that the county would see at the location that they would be most favorable to.
Kevin?
Abby, what about the next development up there, Hawthorne Heights, where it's an in, right-in, right-out?
Yeah, again, I didn't, I was reluctant to put this in the staff memo, right? But I wanted to make sure that the commission was clear that we've received this from the county. This is not a city plan, this is a county plan. The county hasn't even, initially hadn't asked for our comments even on this. There has been no planning study done. So I think this is, they're desirable. But anytime that we've got those jurisdictions that are looking at those right-in, right-outs, so County Road, or Highway 97 is also another good example, as we're working with them on the design of that, where there are those right-in, right-outs. Hawthorne Heights, if they're taking that right-in, right-out, may have that opportunity again, if this is a roundabout, to do the roundabout and come in and do those turns if it becomes a divided highway in the future.
Susan?
I was at the neighborhood meeting when this was originally discussed, and the folks at 6785, 6641, 6567, and the one that I can't see the number on because there are two little arrows on it, were all there and they were all really concerned about access of just them, not a future of selling for development, just them to get in and out of County Road 50. I would not be looking forward to telling them all that you all get to do right-ins and right-outs.
Yeah, I do think that as part of our continued conversations with the county that we would request the county to do some public outreach. I don't know how much the county is ready to be doing co-planning studies on this road.
We do have significant development interest in 6640 on the north side. We know that there's going to be a lot there. We know that there is a high school down at Goodview that makes this a very challenging road at many times of the day. Not just beginning and end of school, but events, football games, the whole nine yards. I, was staff able to guide the developer at all to go with some of their previous plans of entering this whole subdivision from Goodview? Coming across their northern lot line or across, some of the earlier development plans showed that and being able to get in in that direction. The intersection at County Road 50 and Highway 61 is not good. Even if you signalize or roundabout that intersection, it is still going to be challenging. Having, having high-density developments trying to get in and out of this that close to the intersection is not a, is not a safe future.
So all other development eritration, versions, plans always showed some access onto County Road 50. And the city staff would not be in support of a, like a one-way or cul-de-sac from Goodview just because of fire safety concerns. That's one way in, one way out to high-density. If something happens, that's trapping a lot of vehicles in there.
I can perhaps see that in the future as a, as a right-in, right-out where your little purple arrow is, that's to the, towards 61 from the gold arrow, as a way of getting out of there and emergency access in. But, but, that's just a not-good area. And we have several subdivisions in the city where you have to wind around much more than this from a, from the major entrance to those subdivisions. What I was hoping was that, that, that staff had strong reasons from the developer why he had sort of abandoned his coming in from Goodview. Thoughts?
You can talk with the developer, it does require some wetland fill. It is a pretty large public improvement that likely is going to become a cut-through road from Goodview so that people avoid the Goodview 202nd intersection. And that is, that's, staff does believe that. I think that those are good questions for the developer.
Other questions to staff?
Mr. Chair, if I may add too, if I recall from some of our conversations with the developer, building a road across the wetland and through the wetland was going to be challenging to get the permits and approvals to do that. Their earlier plans, Susan is right, showed that. But I think they did some further investigation and found they may not even be able to get the permission to do that or the mitigation to do that would have been really challenging for them.
Are you talking about that little wetland that's up on the corner that over the past 30 years has been a wetland? No, it's not a wetland, yes, man, dot, fix the drainage in that area?
No, so if you show up on the screen, anything that's yellow there is just, it's National Wetlands Inventory. These are not delineated wetlands. I think I've got a wetland map. Fortunately, I can pull up a different plant. There's a pretty sizable wetland that even though it looks like a, here, I can show you. So you see the yellow? Do you see this line here? That's wetland. You see that through there?
Right, and I thought that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's fine, that connection through there resulted in a pretty significant amount of fill to be able to get that roadway through there.
I remembered one of the plans earlier, that was going to be an amenity and it was going to be a cute little bridge over the...
Which we still would have with the public trail. It's a very minor impact now. It's probably even a diminus...
Diminimus.
But, these big words, they're hard for me. That wouldn't necessarily result in having to mitigate. Whereas the road with the utilities with the trail, it just got to be a pretty large improvement going through there for what is... I know that it is a tricky site, we are aware of that.
I believe the developer is here, the owner and developer?
Sure.
You may want to share some thoughts with us?
Sure. Todd Christiansen, 6150-202nd. I'm not really sure where to start here, but I think we're all desirous of an entrance here. This is a separate parcel with a separate PID. It's paid taxes for not know how many years, it has an entrance. So I don't know how you could landlock it. But, that being said, there is no way that a road can come through from Goodview. There's got a wetland down here, and there's a wetland that drops all the way, you see the red line? Drops all the way down to the barns. There's no road coming through there. As long as there's an alternative, the water shit will not approve a road. And the alternative is coming off of 50th. And I think we're really only talking about 100 feet. And with the city's acquisition of the property across the street, you know, the three parties will be getting together to figure out where that entrance is going to go. But it's going to go somewhere on 50th. You know, whether it's where we propose. Well, we're not really proposing anything right now other than a right-of-way for utilities and a trail. And we're putting an 80-foot easement in there for that. You know, the site plan that comes in for that site will be, you know, looked at by the planning commission and city council when it's time to come in. We're just looking to subdivide the site and get the two parcels, you know, separated. So I think that, you know, I'm hoping that the access, you know, will come later. But all we're looking to do is do the minor subdivision.
And you do realize that the county mayor may not grant you access on that parcel?
Well, if they don't grant us access and we can't figure it out, then we'll have to access it through the Shadow Creek property, which means we'll be sliding down close to the driveway that exists now, onto the other property. Coming in, doing a hard left turn, and getting over to the other site. So, I mean, that's really what, it's, you know, it's 100 feet and we're, you know, the thing is, is if we put it where, we're not sure where they want it now because we have, you know, the city acquiring that property, we have another property owner here behind us. And so everybody wants it to work. You know, there's already been discussion of turn lanes and those kinds of things, and they'll come with the project. But, you know, 50th, according to the county, you know, their last statement to me was, it carries a little over 1,500 cars a day. The major collector that they've identified it is, requires it to carry 5,500 cars a day. Well, you know, while it might seem like it carries a little bit of traffic, I mean, I live on that road. So, you know, I don't, I don't know that our site is going to do that much to that traffic within 200 feet of, or 550 feet of the road. I think there's a lot of roads like that around the community. I don't, I don't really see it as a safety issue, 100 feet, I really don't. If there has to be some additional turn lanes or additional length, then that would be determined by the county highway department. So I, you know, we're kind of at their whim, you know, at the end of the day.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, well, and I think so, we're just looking for a subdivision approval and then continue to work with city staff and county staff on where the entrance is going to go through that process.
Mr. Christiansen, my concern is that I cannot in good conscience subdivide a piece of property that practically, in, in, in a, in a real world, will not have access.
Well, in a real world, you can't landlock a piece of property. And this has its own, no, you can't. Okay? No, you can't. So this property has an access, it's been used for many years, every day. Every day until probably a month ago. It's been used every day by, by the people that own the property. So there's, there's a manhole there, there's always been meant to be an entrance there. If this was a gas station on the corner, where would that entrance be? Not in the driveway of the farm.
The, the corner property that Terry used to own was the gas station on the southeast side. There was not going to be, the old comp plans never had gas stations on the northeast side. And...
I mean, we're just using it as a condition. I don't, I don't really see the difficulty. If it's a condition of the county looking at the access in the city, I mean, that's, you know, these things happen all the time. you know, these things happen all the time. I don't know why it's, why it's a problem.
I do just want to note for the record again that the property is guided from ex use. It's 10, 12 acres. It is required to have a minimum 50% residential, so there could be commercial on the property as well. Now, is it a convenience station? I would have to look through the code, but it does contemplate the possibility of commercial in this location. I'm just stating that for the record. It isn't, wasn't guided for 100% high-density residential. That's just what I believe is going to be coming before you.
Thank you.
I don't even have an application for that yet, so...
Is there anything else?
What's your thoughts on this, sir?
Well, I mean, the subdivision is out in front of you because there's an, there's a proposed apartment site that'll be coming later after the subdivision. We need to get the subdivision recorded and in so that they can come in and do their site plan, get it approved. And entrance has been going back and forth, you know, for a while now. It's actually measured from the stop sign, 660 feet, not from the right-of-way. And it is only a recommendation by MnDOT that they're following. It's not, it's not a hard and fast rule. It can easily be moved and have, you know, have, not, you don't have to ask for a variance. It's just a recommendation by MnDOT, only for a major collector road that carries over 5,500 cars a day, needs to be 660 feet away. They recommend, but there's obviously reasons or times when that can't happen, you know, that are reasonable about it. The county highway department is, you know, they want 660 feet. And so, we're just looking, we want to line everything up, you know. Makes, only makes the most sense to line up the entrances. And then if you put it on his property, well, then the city has to access through that and then you take part of his property away. So, there's got to be just some commonality here and some agreement and hopefully that, you know, between the three or four of us, we can come to that conclusion. Either way, there's going to be an entrance somewhere, you know, within 100 feet of where, plus or minus. I mean, it's, it's really pretty close. And, you know, they're proposing the turn lanes and all those kinds of things, turning in, turning out, maybe even a median, which would be surprising because there isn't one anywhere else, but that's really up to them. And, you know, they're the county, they're the highway department, so we kind of, you know, like you said, we're at their whim a little bit, you know? I mean, at one point, they'll decide and then we'll have to live with it. So, but either way, there's going to be an entrance on, on the road, whether it's right at the easement or whether we have to slide it over a little bit more, or whether I got to dig up the stop sign and push it across the road. It's got to be 660 feet from it. That's where it's got to go.
So, you, you're pretty confident that whoever's developing the apartment complex will be okay with the right-in, right-out on that driveway onto County Road 50?
We've always, we've always planned it that way, from the very beginning, that there would be turn lanes, right-in, right-out.
Okay, so, so there won't be any ability to turn left into that apartment complex from County Road 50?
No, you'll be able to come down and turn left. There'd be a left-hand turn lane there.
Todd A...
If they want one. They may not, they may not require one. I'm not, you know, I can't speak for them. But no, you'll, you'll have to be able to turn left into there.
Currently, they don't show any option to turn left.
In either of those developments?
Nope. This is part of the discussion we're having here is that we don't...
This shows neither.
Well, that's just a really, you want to address that drawing, Abby? I mean, it's really crude. I mean...
It is. I mean, it isn't, I don't think anything that's been formally adopted by the county. It's at the moment, I think, still something they want to discuss, the city staff wants to discuss, but they do show only future right-in, right-out in this location along County Road 50.
So, that'll have to be worked out. But that'll be up to the county, whether they, whatever they want to do. I mean, either way.
So, Abby, I have a, don't go anywhere, Todd, please. If we do this subdivision and we find out that it slides over and it's on the farm property, the horse property?
Yep.
Is that then accessed with an easement or do we...
There would need to be some sort of easement, public easement, something of that nature. And I...
We can't split it again, right? You matter...
Well, you would end up needing to split the stable site.
We would probably just do with an easement.
Yeah, I think it would probably be an easement, but I would want to consult with the attorney. I do know it's pretty tight through there to get something done.
The only reason I ask, I believe when we do a subdivision, you can't divide again for so many years?
On a minor subdivision, that is correct. So, as a reminder, the property that the stable site is on is a part of a major subdivision. That's, I think, Lot 1.
Yep.
Or maybe it's even a Lot 1, Block 1, and the townhomes are a different block. I don't remember. You can re-subdivide?
The major.
The majors that have already been plotted.
So, then this minor could possibly end up with us, a merge of two parcels? That's allowed? If we, if for some reason we had to get them to the road? Do you know what I'm asking?
What ends up happening is a minor subdivision of the stable site that then the piece, the right-of-way piece gets bound to one of those other parcels, or it's just an easement for the public.
And we can, we can manage it somehow?
I think there's some way that we can do that, yes.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, it's...
Mr. Christiansen, do you have Washington County's July 25th letter?
Yes.
Okay. So, you, you saw the words that the county used?
Yes. Yes.
They were, they were not what, you know, we can work out. These were, we are opposed to.
Right. Based on the entrance being at the property line where, you know, quite frankly, there really is no entrance proposed on this minor subdivision. It's just a boundary line. There's no in and out. We're not showing any entrance on this property. We're looking, there's, there's nothing showing that, hey, this is the driveway. We put an easement on there for the trail, and one way or another, the road is going up that property line. If it comes in a little bit farther down and it has to do a hard left and then a hard right to come up along that property line, that's what it'll do. It's got to get around the house.
If the subdivision were to move forward as proposed, the county would likely have to restrict it to a right-in, right-out with a center median along County Road 50 and prohibit U-turns on each end of that median at Goodview and at Highway 61 due to the lack of available road width and the impacts to traffic flow on Highway 61.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Other questions to the applicant? We may have some more later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We asked if you wish to speak to this application. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts. Once we have heard from all parties, we will close the public hearing and we will bring it back for further discussion and decision by the planning commission. So, with that, we'll open the planning, the public hearing at 7:59. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online or any emails to be read in?
The only email would be the letter that was on the dais tonight for you from the county. If you'd like me to read that into the record, I can, but I do believe Commissioner Young summarized the highlights of that letter.
It'll be added to the packet?
We will add it to the packet.
That's good enough for me. Susan read most of it, so...
Just one paragraph.
I'll ask one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? See, no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing at 8:00 PM. Commissioners, it's back to us.
I have some concerns with just the access to Parcel A. And I have major concerns with the access to County Road 50.
Yeah, there's some problems, yeah.
I'm not going to disagree with you, Kevin, but what they're asking for is it to be split. They're not asking for any development on the parcel. That battle will most likely come forward at a later date.
But how do we split something without having access to a parcel? I mean, like you said, it'd be landlocked at that point.
So, that is why the city staff has recommended that we would not, you can make that recommendation to council. The council could even take action, but we are seeing conditional approval, that we would not release the deeds. We would not formalize that lot split until we know we have access.
So, that would be your recommendation five handles it?
The condition number five? I don't remember. My condition's off the top of my, yes. Proof of access shall be submitted to the city prior to the release of deeds and/or building permits. And I put an and/or in there just, we don't know, you know, there's a couple of different factors here. The county may say, okay, we'll provide that access, but you need to have engineered plans approved later. I don't, you know, there's a number of things that chicken and egg...
Where does the county come in in this process?
I'm sorry?
Where would the county come in in this process?
When they would move forward for wanting to develop it. They would come with their concept plan.
Back to us.
And that would go to the, does the county get the concept ready or just get the preliminary?
So, all that that would come back before you would be a site plan review?
Yeah.
So, the, you know, physical building, the layout like we did for Mr. Carwash. And we would send that to the county and we would probably receive very similar comments to these. Likely, we'd have that same comment that, that need to figure out that access before the issuance of the building permit. We always verify that properties have County Road access permit or a state access permit.
And, and if, let's just say Parcel B was going to be commercial, are we, if Parcel A is going to be apartments, are we going to meet our requirements for housing?
We still have to work through that one with the Met Council. I do believe so. I think that that density, I don't personally actually think that these are going to be commercial. I think they're both going to be a medium to high-density. But yes, I do believe that we're going to be able to meet our density requirements.
But again, that's something we'll check when plans come in.
Susan? My Kevin's thinking?
I realize that it just, our rules say it just has to front on a road, and it fronts on Highway 61, and we know that, that there's not going to be another entrance from 61. And that, I have a concern, and I, I don't know if you've asked the city attorney this. If we approve this lot split, are we inferring that the lot is developable? And since it would be split, it could be sold, and a purchaser could have the assumption that since it was split in accordance with the city's rules, it is developable with full accesses? And it's, it's just lame and not. And so, my concern is, are we inferring a condition of access and the ability to develop by approving this lot split?
I am not an attorney, nor am I going to play one this evening. I have not asked the attorney that question. The attorney does sit in our development team meetings. She has reviewed this as well. City Attorney Johnson, well, I cannot put words in her mouth, has, I'll paraphrase, essentially said, this is a fight between the county and the landowner. I'm going to sit here today and say that property, Parcel B, has an access point to Parcel B. And if this was not onto a county road and they were proposing to use an easement to that other parcel, it, it would be something that we would approve. And so, I can see where you're saying, are we inferring this? I think a lot split would say that, yes, these are two buildable parcels if there's access. I will also say that I do know at least the party that's interested in Parcel B. I have not spoke with anybody who's interested in Parcel A other than the landowner, who may want to develop on it in the future. And I have been very honest and open and did everything a public record that neither parcel right now have access, and there are some concerns with their ability to gain access.
I can't read the screen. So, Parcel A, which PID is that?
Oh, so the whole thing is just a single PID with the one that's advertised on the agenda of 2003221410001. New PIDs have not been established for Parcel A and Parcel B.
Okay.
Because they don't exist as two separate parcels right now.
Okay.
I will also, no, you're an advisory body. Luckily, the council gets to make the hard decision. If this council thinks that this is not in conformance with our code in some way, such as no guaranteed assurance of access, I think that this body could certainly recommend denial. It wouldn't be the first time, I think, this body's gone against a staff recommendation. I just don't know that any other, if you're in action this evening, isn't going to, we just would be back in this situation, could be just back in this situation again in two weeks, so...
Mr. Chair, I cannot in good conscience recommend to the council that this be done, so...
So, before we get any motions here, we have some concern, I think. You know, our job is to usually make the council's life easier. Doesn't hap, it happens about 85% of the time. So, we're in this, probably this 15% area right here that we could end up going one way or another. Could we, I, I would float possibly tabling to get a little more info about, from legal, and we rarely ask for legal on the planning, just to make sure that, this is really an odd site, and we, I just don't, I'm with Susan on this. I don't want to get in a jam that now we're forced to do something that the county's not going to go along with, and then, then all kinds of lawyers get involved, so... I'm wondering if that would be an option to the commission?
Mr. Chair, if I can offer, maybe if, to keep it moving along, I would recommend that city attorney review this before it goes to the city council to have that input for the council's benefit.
With, with the questions that we have been asking?
Essentially, are we inferring that this is a, Parcel A is a developable either parcel? Either parcel, really, because if there is no access...
They're both accessible.
And, and would the city have, and a second question, would the city have any obligation after recommending the lot split to do unusual or to be creative in obtaining access? In other words, lobbying with, with the watershed district to, to do something cheaper to get in from Goodview? I'm, I am, I'm very concerned with the potential obligation to the city to, to, to help obtain access if we do indeed split this property into something that is perhaps not strictly not accessible, but practically not accessible.
Mr. Chair, let me offer this. Think, think if this was Hall 1 parcel and somebody came in with a site plan for the entire site and didn't want a subdivision. We'd still have the same condition. You would have to get access approval from the county.
Yes, that's correct.
But if it's, if it's one property...
You're not contemplating landlocking the northern property.
Right, right. We're, this, this is, this is creating a separate property which may not be accessible in the future, and it's a, a whole separate property. It's not part of one where they can work with each other or, or work within their own property. This is a separate property.
And if it's an easement, then you might have to have, you know, maintenance agreements. Who's going to take care of this and who's going to take care of that? And geez, what if there's 80 inches of snow? Who's going to plow it? Because it's private easement, right? Who's going to plow it because it's private easement, right?
We've, we've had those situations here and they've been just a melon of a heath.
The other issue is if it's, becomes land-like such we, as a commission, we don't approve non-to, uh-
Right.
Non-conforming lots.
Right.
So I, and I appreciate Ken at, um, moving it forward and, and getting legal involved. I, I, this is a pretty weird thorny issue and, and personally, I think I would rather see it back here.
Um, that is, uh, just fine. I have asked the county to meet, this isn't, we've been trying to schedule a meeting for some time now about this matter and my hope is that the county is willing to meet with the city and these landowners. Um, I'm not talking about all of County Route fifty, but certainly with the landowner here and then the one to the south. Because as the county notes, they would like that those accesses to line up. I imagine even if there is a divided highway there, we still would like those sightlines of everything. And so I, you know, I'm with the hope that we could have that happen in the next two weeks. I don't, you know, know how that will change things, but we certainly, um, can keep working to, one, get those legal opinions and try to get that conversation continuing with the county.
And I found Mr. Sandberg to be very creative and very willing to, to look outside a box at, at some options, but he is also absolutely committed to public safety.
So commissioners?
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table, will I have a second?
Mr. Chair, was there a, a date certain?
No, it just-
Depends on when y'all can pull it together.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Chairman.
I have a motion, a second, it's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So this will come back to us at a future date after you guys work out a little bit more with, uh, both the county and we get some legal input, um, so that we can make a good decision for the city council and make a good recommendation. So, thank you for coming this evening. We'll move to item number seven, discussion.
Hi, well, we're going to have a planning commission meeting on the ninth.
And the twenty-
Two meetings in August for sure.
Well, that's good because I am retired and can use the income.
Uh, yes, we do have, uh, we just had an applications middle deadline on Monday, so we do have, um, agendas set for August ninth and August, uh, twenty-third. Both of them not full, not crazy full, couple items on each. I think, uh, that ninth has three. Um, we did just have neighborhood meeting tonight on a zoning text amendment for interstate companies of, as proposing for our industrial district to consider contractor service yards as a conditional use in our industrial district. Um, so know that that is coming forth for you at your next meeting. Additionally, uh, county's household hazardous waste site, um, that would be proposed at the intersection of Highway sixty-one and Headwaters Boulevard that is actually city-owned properties. We're a partner in at least the review process. I don't remember, I think there was one more on that meeting. Um, oh, and yes, Hidden Creek. Um, so Hidden Creek will be coming back before you for final plot of a twenty-two lot subdivision. So not quite as much as they thought that they would have, uh, the last time you saw them, but that is something that, um, will be back for you. I don't remember what is going to be on the second meeting in August, but-
They did new apartment project, I think it just came in.
I'm sorry, I don't remember where Hidden Creek is.
Uh, near, north of Taylor Farm, but on the east side. So if you take, uh, Headwaters Boulevard and keep heading to the west, um, of Fenway, um, up, that it'll connect to the backside of, I'm never gonna-
Kind of behind Lila there?
Yeah.
To the west.
Yeah.
North side of the road.
And so the Hidden Creek that you're referring to is the tile system?
Pardon? Uh, well, it's, uh, it is a project that involves some of the former tile of the Judicial Dish Four?
Yeah.
Is it four? Eight? I don't remember, there's a number of them through there. So yes, you've got some full agendas coming, not huge, but big things coming up. Our workload has not slowed. Building permits are still up, fence permits are still up. I think even chicken permits are still up. Um, also wanted to let you know, if you did not know, uh, former assistant city administrator, Dan Undem, I say the word former, he left the city a few weeks ago to be the city administrator in Lindstrom. So, um, a lot has happened in our time since we've last met. Um, but at this point, the city has not filled that position and so there are a number of duties that are getting spread amongst other staff. So, um, as much as I had hoped that we would start working on zoning ordinance amendments, the massive overhaul we know we need to do, um, it'll be a little bit more time before we start that project. However, we have started to work with our city attorney on, uh, improving our administrative enforcement, code sections. So we do have enforcement provisions, but they're not great. And so we are looking at beefing up our nuisance regulations to be better able to cite nuisance properties administratively. And so this is, uh, really creating a whole new program for the city where we had the ability to before, but it was choppy and it wasn't great. Um, we hope to have that process in place. No later, I think we are aiming for December first so that if snow hits the ground, we might be able to send some warning notices to property owners that aren't shoveling and then maybe possibly ticket them. Um, we are also working as a, a city, uh, multi-department level, uh, event team. We call ourselves the special event team. It's part of the downtown plan. The city council had, wanted to see the downtown plan calls for more programming in the downtown area. Um, there's been a lot of talks about more events, being like other Washington County event-driven communities. Um, city staff thought it might be good to take a look at what are our existing policies? How are we actually reviewing and approving, um, events right now? And it turns out there's no consistency across multiple departments for, I want to say forty-some public events in the community that are happening each year. So it is our hope that by the end of the year, we will have a new single special event form process that in twenty twenty-four, we start kind of just streamlining our reviews, permitting approvals. You know, assurances to the public sector. We have things like insurance from event holders, just little things like that.
Well, since I kind of have a fairly large event that happens every year, we are required now on our permit to, to say, yes, we're insured. And we do have to have the fire inspector come and deal with the tent and the propane and the-
Yep.
The yada, yada.
Yep, there, um, not all events were treated equally. So, um, depending on where those events were, uh, public land, private land, in a park, on a street, they had just different review processes and permits and we're really trying to streamline it all into one. So that if we become more of an event-driven city, we're just, uh, really, you know, dialed in on how we review them and really, um, help protect the public interest in the long run. The number of, um, events that have, are growing have grown. Um, and we do need to maybe, uh, look at some of the bounds of some of these events to maybe pulling some things in. So-
County Health and Environment has some pretty good, um, uh, guidelines on some of the waste recycling and organics collection for events.
Oh, great, we'll look into that. So as much as, uh, I want to get working on, um, zoning code, uh, just know that we, we have a few things, other things that are taking mine account this time right now, so. We have been successful though, I will say, in training in Dawn. Sorry, we haven't brought her yet, um, but, uh, to council or commission meeting, but Dawn has been really great. She's even worked into reviewing some of those, what we would consider more, excuse me, more administrative permits, the fence permits. Um, when I first came on, it took a few weeks to issue a fence permit in like twelve, thirteen different steps. We've gotten it down to about less than five and she's even issuing some of them over the counter. So, um, we're really making progress, I think, in just our process improvement.
Questions to Abby?
Or Ken?
Or Ken? I have two comments.
Yes.
One on the minutes tonight.
Yeah.
We, I noticed that, uh, the vote for six-zero because, uh, Commissioner Young wasn't here. She was absent. But down in, uh, we have the motions and everything. It says if they're absent and there's no names in there. Her name, so either the absent lines got to disappear or we have to fill in who was absent. And it was on every motion.
Okay, we will, I'll take a look at that.
Because you know, she's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, oh, oh, yes. Your pre- your lack of presence is, doesn't go unnoticed, Commissioner Young.
And then my second, um, there was a, a appeal of the commission on a northern national, nation, natu- I have the same language issue tonight.
I actually have two updates for you on that. There was an appeal on that. The city council, um, staff, aye. I will just say aye. Um, when the appeal was made, I never extended the sixty-day requirement that by law we are required to do. Um, so we proceeded with the hearing notice with the city council, but by the time it had gotten to the city council, it was well past the sixty days. So therefore it was automatically approved. This is one of those ones that I am, I have, that's not happened to me at all in my career. I've been practicing planning in Minnesota for eleven years and well versed the sixty-day rule. I am a little thankful that it was on one that was a federally regulated project, although I am sorry to that neighborhood, um, that I think felt like they didn't get their due, um, process, their ability. We still held a public hearing at the city council level. Uh, if anything else comes further, that I'll let you know. Also, uh, Commissioner Young, you brought up the question of landowners' ability to, uh, wetland bank and I do believe the city council outright prohibited wetland banking within the city.
Abby, can you give us an update on the Technology Park?
Yeah, sure. So, um, Headwaters one twenty-three, uh, is a piece of property that the city owns. Let me just pull it up because I'm sure Commissioner Miller isn't, uh, Commissioner Johnson over there. Yeah, some of you have some very com- Larson has some very common, uh, last names.
Would you like us to wear hats with their name on it?
No, if I just open-
Last time I showed her my name, Tae.
If I just open my eyes and read your names. Uh, so up on the screen in front of you is a piece of parcel that we commonly refer to as Headwaters one twenty-three. Uh, it's a hundred and twenty-three acre site. When you remove the wetlands, it's not that as much, still about a, a little over a hundred acres. We have been actively marketing that site is part of the Minnesota Technology Corridor. So along I thirty-five, there's a number of cities and counties and utility companies that have partnered together to try to market this area as really good for techno- technology. Uh, the city has reviewed a number of different developments over the years, requests for proposals. Um, and the site has actually ranked fairly high. One of the challenges, I think, with any of the properties right now is just lead time on ramping up electrical capacity, which we're finding is a little more tricky in the corridor in itself. Now that being said, we have not had any inquiries on it for some time. So the EDA did authorize, end of last year, city staff to work with a consultant to look at a ghost plat on the property. So just looking at how is it that this property might be able to be subdivided in the future into smaller parcels and maybe advertised and marketed in a different way. We have talked about this with our listing agent, CBRE, who has modified our, um, our marketing materials to expand outside of just technology, uh, to include things like office park, medical, that sort of thing. Everything I'm hearing so far from the commercial development world is the property does not have enough access to rooftops to make it viable for your kind of commercial world. Like I think we saw maybe Headwaters Village. Those concept plats that I mentioned haven't been brought back to the EDA and the city council to see if we wanted to move forward. I know that there's been some internal discussion on a staff level of whether or not the city is, wants to go out for, um, RFP to see if there's any potential developers interested in developing the site in a different fashion than just a single user. But again, we haven't talked to the ED or the council on that yet.
So we originally changed that zoning.
We did.
And can we change it back? I mean, how would that process go? If, who, where would that start? Would the city have to, the council have to bring it to us to change that zoning back? Or could we as a planning commission bring forward?
I think because it's owned by the city, I think the planning commission would want to reach out to the council um, to say, hey, I think that we should probably consider the rezoning of this parcel. I personally think that the city should probably wait to take any action. So any rezoning, uh, rezonings may also require a comp plan amendment, which are a little bit bigger processes. They take a little more time, a little bit more money. I think the city should have the conversation internally and maybe this is some joint workshop with the planning commission, maybe even a little bit later, um, early fall. Maybe schedule a few things on that workshop, zoning code amendments, this property, of whether or not we should be throwing out some sort of RFP to see if there's a developer out there that might be interested. And to see what we get. Do we get some mixed use? Do we get just commercial? Do we, you know?
I'm, I'm confident there's multiple developers that would want to do something with that. I've had people reach out and, um, including people that originally brought plats forward with some partial development around it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, you guys probably know as much as I do or more or less, but as far as I know, we haven't really had anything solid going with that.
We haven't. Um, I mean, we, we have been, uh, finalists in a number of different nationwide searches. They are big box used, I mean, big-
Bridesmaids again, huh?
Always the bridesmaid, Ken. Uh, one of the biggest challenges of the site for those larger, um, users is they're really looking for access to the interstate.
Right, right, we, we, we knew that originally when it was pushed to change-
And, um, there are conversations about just Headwaters and Headwaters connecting over to Elmcrest. I will let you know, I'm actually meeting regionally, if I haven't already met, let you know. Anoka County, Washington County, the cities of Hugo, Lionel Lakes, Columbus and, uh, Forest Lake have been meeting to talk about regional transportation. The potential for a future interchange along I with, I thirty-five, wherever that may be. Um, including then the potential development, uh, expansion of Elmcrest and its potential, um, transfer from local jurisdictions to the county. And so it's very preliminary right now. We haven't involved any planning commissions, any councils, anything. I think in the next couple of months, you might see something start to come forward on that because we're really looking at, um, the potential development. I think I mentioned this to you once, the Scannell property, I think it's right in this location. And its impact on, on, on this area. And how as a region, a little sub-region, we really need to be well-aligned in our transportation planning. So I bring all this up to you though, Commissioner Miller, because that conversation of that access coming through and what this user is, I think could shift pretty significantly as those regional transportation plans might shift regionally. I don't know that for certain. I don't think any of us can predict the future. But I certainly think that staff can help facilitate those conversations between the planning commission, the council, even the EDA if the, you know, if this commission's favorable.
Any other question for Abby? Ken, would you like to add anything?
No, Abby did a great job tonight, thank you.
Questions to Ken?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just kept talking.
No, you know, I did, uh, I think Abby, I think you answered my question. I think I emailed you regarding the, uh, up on the board, uh, promoting different city events and you'd indicated there were some restrictions on what can be put up there and what can't be put up there, I think. promoting different city events, and you'd indicated there were some restrictions on what can be put up there and what can't be put up there, I think. But, uh, we have a lot of events, and it seems like we're getting very few put up there.
So...
I saw Arts in the Park tonight.
Yep.
That's always on there.
Yep, Arts in the Park is always on there.
The one out here? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I'm talking about the one on the
Thirty-five.
The new billboard.
The electronic one.
So, um, the, uh, ordinance that was written indicates that a percentage of the ad space will be dedicated for public and public safety? I don't remember the exact, public service, public safety, something like that. Those were the words. Um, it's tricky because many of our open-to-the-public events are organized and held by private individuals and parties. And so while I completely agree with you, these are events that are bringing people into the community and getting in downtown and visiting businesses and all that, we haven't figured out that system yet for, again, once our events are approved, how they're approved, when they're approved, who approves them, how then we might be able to work with them to work with a system. I know that the billboard owner, Chuck Bulcom, really wants to see more community events up there. Um, we, we're not there yet. Uh, Dan did all of our communications. So, uh, we need to figure out who's doing communications.
That's a significant loss, in my opinion, for the city.
It is, yeah, yeah. There's a, uh, great institutional knowledge, uh, amazing, um, administrative professional that's worked here for a long time, and, you know, if there's anything that we didn't know, we went to Dan, so.
I have seen the chamber advertised on the billboard.
Yep.
So, are we looking, and, and, and we got like, so like the chambers, okay, and the city's, okay, would the rotary be, okay?
Well, so this is the tricky part for Chuck. So far, these individual organizations have been going right to the board, and there hasn't been a problem yet because his inventory is still low. Um, ideally, in the future, we'd like to have some sort of system
Oh, yeah.
that he's able to, you know, that he, we, they are all able to work together. Um, as part of our event review process, we are encouraging all event permit holders to then reach out to the chamber. The chamber has a new website, which includes a new community calendar. Even though we have calendars on our website, we're really trying to push a lot of that community, um, events to that chamber website. Um, so I think it's just part of our review and permitting process of, you know, how we make sure that they're marketing people, whoever that is. You know, and I get a lot of these events are the rotary or the lines, or whomever it might be, and it might just be Paul that is doing marketing. That Paul gets the clearance to work with Chuck, or, um, you know, hopefully someday in the future, the city has somebody in communications. I think there's an excellent opportunity for the community to really position itself a little bit more, um, proactively through marketing and communications. Um, but right now, it's just been tricky because we're, we're low-resourced.
We did suck him in as a rotary member, though.
You guys have no shame.
Nope, none.
Susan, anything else to add?
Nope.
We're good.
Mr. Larson, anything you would like to add?
Chairman, I'm good tonight, thank you.
And I have nothing else, so the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
Kevin doesn't get a final last word there?
You get away?
I was just trying to think how much longer I could delay, because Susan just wants to go watch soccer.
She does.
We're getting our bus kicked.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, I have nothing else. I will make a motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Once again, thank you commissioners for your valuable time this evening and all your wisdom and knowledge for both the commissioners and the city staff.